I'd like to call the meeting of the Education and Government Committee to order. All committee members are present, and we'll get started. The only thing on the agenda tonight is continued charter discussion. We'll continue our discussions on local law C, which is a local law, draft local law that would amend the Charter of the county in its entirety and shift no powers or duties, and can be adopted by simple local law, subject to no referendum. So last week, just to go over, I know I said I was going to send it out, but I didn't. Last week, we went over quite a bit of stuff, just briefly, looking at some things that we discussed changing, removing the section on county seal due to some legal requirements at the state level and the very tender nature of what a county seal is, taking it right out of there and leaving it status quo. We are going to revisit the section on county insignia and county flag, once we get an opinion, some language back from the Attorney General as well as NISAC. In Section 204, dealing with legislative vacancies, we're going to change the language from 30 days after a vacancy to 60 days. We have to, we're going to look at possibly the Commission on reapportionment, which I want to definitely talk more about tonight and see where everybody stands at this point, and see if we can come to some consensus on that. Section 210, dealing with the clerk of the legislature, that term will be co-terminous with the appointing authority, which would be the county legislature. But I definitely want to touch on that and see if we're all feeling the same way as we did last week. Section 211 on counsel to the legislature will be removed. Section 209, we're going to add that at the organizational meeting, in addition to appointing, selecting a chair, a deputy chair, that the legislature will set rules, set official newspapers, depositories, and appoint a clerk every three years. And that's the organizational business that can be conducted at an organizational meeting. No other business can be conducted at an organizational meeting. Section 215, that the county auditor, if there, if one shall exist, shall be co-terminous with the legislature, and if one exists, it will take place of the audit committee. And then Article 10, we would like to get further cost analysis, dealing with Health and Human Services, from the Executive's Office. Additionally, the county attorney and I had a chance to meet this past Friday to discuss a number of things in the charter. Some of the things that we hadn't touched on is Health and Human Services, which we'll talk a little bit more about. Some Appointing Authority, which will fall under Local Law D. Human Resources, or Personnel Department, which we'll, I'll touch on this evening. Our county clerk, which will fall under Local Law D. The Department of Law, as well as the Sanitary Sewer District, and the section on county officers. So I want to treat this the same way as we did last time, just to have some order to it. But as we go through, there's definitely going to be some stuff that we can skip right through after discussing it. At this point, is there any other discussion on Article 1? Mainly, the questions here would be dealing with county seal, which we had discussed would be removed, county insignia, county flag, and definitions. All right, moving on to Article 2, then. Going through this, I want to look at, with what we've discussed last week, are there any concerns or any changes of heart with making the legislative officers co-terminous, legislative-appointed officers co-terminous with the legislature? Or the organizational meeting changes? Any other thoughts on that? Okay. So that we will, we will stand on. Just to add, once, once we get through this meeting, I think we'll be at a decent place where I'm going to go through and actually make red-line changes to this draft, which will then be emailed out to everybody, so we can see exactly what's been changed, and then that will be the most current draft form. Yes?
On 2.4, we're increasing the 30 days to 60 days, are we increasing every other one by 30?
No. So we'll be, in Section 204, the only, the change will be that if the legis, if a vacancy occurs on the legislature, if within 60 days of that, the legislature fails to make an appointment, it triggers this backup mechanism. Other than that, the times would stay the same, being that a special election will be conducted 90 days after the vacancy occurred, and then if a general election is 120 days, then that's when it will fall on. And if I don't see, raise your hand at some point, just yellow, you know, this, I think we can treat this as a lax, lax meeting. Looking through this, any thoughts on Article 3? In this draft, there are no--
The 453, Section 25, Commission for reapportionment--
Yes, yes.
There was some really good discussion about that before. I think how we kind of loosely left it was if six came from the legislator-at-large, the majority, and then three from the county executive--
That wouldn't be a shift in power, so we could, you know, address that here. Just to bring everybody on the same page, we're looking at Page 4. This is dealing with the appointments to the Commission on reapportionment, and the fact that our charter specifies that two shall be appoint, three in total shall be appointed by the minority party or parties. Two, three shall be appointed by the chair, and three shall be appointed by the county executive. When we discussed how that might pose a concern, especially since we take ourselves as an example, there are two minority parties, and our chair is a member of the minority party. So it definitely throws up a big concern whether we should be appointing based, the appointing authority should be based on party or not, because there's already a requirement that no more than three members of the commission be of the same party. We discussed possibly making it without shifting any powers, if there were six appointments that were the appointment of the legislature as a whole, I think we could do a number of different things here, but what are, what is the legislature's thoughts on that? If there are any additional thoughts from last week's meeting?
Well, let's say there's four parties. If one from each party put up one person, and then the other two is the majority of the body. And that's just a suggestion, or it can be all six be a choice of the majority of the In hopes that it opens the lines of communication, the legislator, legislators keep the county's best interest at heart.
Any other thoughts? Any thoughts on the direction we should take with this, whether we should alter it, or, yes?
I do think it's important to handle all those parties on there, and I think with no more than three members from one party, this is safety.
I think that's, I think that's good to have in there. You know, the Appointing Authority definitely throws an interesting second step into the mix, but, you know, there's no way to ever foresee what the party makeup will be, or let alone what the parties will be 20, 30, 50 years from now. So it's, you know, if, if there's any, you know, thoughts as we proceed with this, or as we look at a second draft of this, you know, I think it's definitely something that we could, we could look at, but kind of an interesting situation. All right.
Just curious, how was the setup the last time you dropped this year? The Charter Commission that decided to--
So this is, nothing was changed for the Commission on reapportionment, so what's shown here is the same as what currently is law. And, and that is, that's what was drafted by the Charter Commission. The makeup of the Charter Commission, was there any, was there any basis on party? It was, the Charter Commission that formed in 2012 was formed by the, by the Board of Supervisors, but there was no, was there any consideration of party?
The consideration was, we all jotted down some names of the people in the community that we thought would be good. I don't believe there was any consideration to party, I could be wrong. And we just went through the list, and I handed in 10 or 15 names of people that I thought would be good, as everybody did, and I think that's how we did it.
But the districts were drawn by the Charter Commission first, correct?
Yes.
So there was no--
There's, you know, that was, that's something that, you know, you're going to get probably a couple of different stories on, the actual district drafting, because it was, under my understanding, supposed to be done by the Board of Supervisors?
There's no misunderstanding. That didn't happen.
Yeah, make no mistake about it.
It was a flagrant--
But there also, Doug Green is absolutely, I want to say his name, he was so instrumental in that, and there was some vague ideas, but in the end, the census proportionments tried to have some consideration, but, yeah, the Board of Supervisors, absolutely not.
Oh, that's dark.
You know, everybody kind of had their horses in the race, and somebody that they believed could support--
Supposedly put them out there in maps to the people when they voted. They were supposedly put out there in the districts for people to see when they voted that day, but--
Yeah.
You know, we didn't do what we were, what, things that we were supposed to do. We ended up adopting maybe.
Some things had to be changed for legal reasons, and that's why our planner was amazing. He did a wonderful job.
So the fact of the matter is, it's not going to be repeated that way?
No.
And he's trying to establish a better structure, and it looks like it's a difficult discussion.
Yeah, it's, I think it's something that, you know, there, I think the qualifications for commission member, personally, I think those are good qualifications, that no more than one member from every then-existing legislative district, no more than three members of the same party. But who the appointing authority should be, you know, I think it's, it's, you've got the balance in there, that there are six from the legislature, being legislative appointments, and three being an executive appointment, but ultimately, the districts do not affect the county executive, the executive branch of government. So that's something, you know, we can definitely take a look. Ulster County has a very lengthy section on their Commission on reapportionment, probably about five pages long by itself. You know, I don't think we need anything that lengthy, because what we've got is, and it's general framework, good, but maybe the Appointing Authority needs to be revisited.
So as it's written, it's a variable amount, it's not a set amount, it'll depend on what parties--
Yeah, it's, you know, two, the first appointment, you know, basically what would happen right now is the minority parties of the legislature would appoint two people, then the chair of the legislature would appoint two people, then the executive would appoint two people, and then the minority parties would appoint one person, the chair would appoint one person, and then the executive would appoint one person, in that order. But it doesn't, in what, in what form do the minority parties choose their three designees? Obviously, the chair and the executive would choose theirs as a single decision, being a single appointing authority, but stating that the minority party or parties, there's no, what those minority party or parties of the legislature caucus to appoint, there's really nothing in there that, it would be left open to interpretation.
So I see the only problem with that scenario would be the majority parties left out, right? Because the chairman isn't a majority--
In, in the case of this legislature right now, the majority party of the legislature would receive no appointments. Because right now, our, our chair is of a minority party. So it's, you know, it's interesting. I think it's, you know, possibly it might be a better idea to, instead of having minority chair, possibly just change the language to minority and majority. There's only going to be one majority party ever, but there might be the case of multiple minority parties. And possibly just a change to say that two shall be appointed by the minority party or parties through, and two shall be appointed by the majority party through caucus?
Yeah.
Something along those lines?
Certainly, I think it requires more discussion.
Yeah.
So would there be a way to, I mean, when we put our commission together, we just were talking, we were trying to stay away from parties, and we were talking about just people that we, that we, is there a way to have it so that we, with titles like Dusty happened to be the FOCC president at the time, is that a title that we could say is part of the commission, no matter who's in that seat? Or is it a, I don't know, is there some way you could do, or supervisor of a, mayors of a--
And what's subjected to referendum, right? Because we're taking power away from these--
Yeah, wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the decision of the legislature, the legislature or executive anymore. It would be set by the charter.
Because I think that's one of the reasons why, when we looked at the people that were serving on the Charter Commission, it's what they brought to the table. It wasn't so much about party lines, it was about what they represented, positions they held, or what they could contribute.
And this is kind of a different animal, because as of right now, one, one problem I might see with something like that, if we're appointed by title, and we had the president, whoever the sitting president of FM would be, they may not be a member or a resident of one of the then-existing legislative districts. So then, in that case, we'd have to, you know, look at altering that structure as well.
Maybe that was a poor example, maybe I was thinking on the lines of mayors, or supervisors, or people that we knew would be elected. You roll the dice right now, say who it might be, but if you say, hey, it's a mayor from--
Yeah. But the, the one, you know, with, with changing legislative districts, that might get tricky. If you say that, let's say, right now, the mayor of Fort Plaine and the supervisor of Mindon, beyond that commission, right now, they're from two different legislative districts, but in 2021, they might be from the same legislative district. So some possible more consideration on that? Yes?
I mean, the concern about the chair being a minority party, I mean, he's elected by the majority, so I'm not really sure that that's a concern. The other two is, in the fact of getting this done, that, you know, that's something that can be revisited next year, following year, the next, up to the next eight years, seven years. But, I mean, I think this is, kind of breaks it down to, it seems pretty fair to me.
Yeah.
I kind of admit, it's a pretty high and lofty goal to be the first legislative body that wouldn't involve politics and--
Hey, I even, I suggested that, that possibly, and by 2020, we'll go to nonpartisan county elections, but I don't know if that's going to happen. All right, any other thoughts on that for the moment? I think it's something that, you know, we should all think about some more, maybe look at some other charter examples, and then, you know, if there's any additional thoughts, we can, we'll add that to the list of something to continue to look at. Anything else dealing with the organizational meeting of the legislature, clerk of the legislature, or any audit functions of the legislature?
When, when you said, if we appoint an auditor at the organizational meeting, it would be co-terminous, so if we decide, well, if the next elected body decides that they wanted to do a part-time or whatever auditor, and then they decided after a year, maybe we'll go back to the committee structure and see, see how that would be. They couldn't, is that, or would it be at the pleasure, like, there's many positions that are at the pleasure of--
So the, the, any of the positions would serve at the pleasure of, but they would, you know, if we decided to make it co-terminous, it would be every legislature's response, duty to appoint a clerk and/or, well, a clerk, period, and the possibility of appointing an auditor. Now, if all of those positions, of course, are subject to appropriations, which the legislature has control over, and, you know, they, those, if, if we established a set year term, and let's say we decided next month to create a position for county auditor, and we, and it was set for three years, that term would start next month and not be co-terminous with us. Where if it's set to be co-terminous, it would go throughout our, our term. Clerk of the legislature is something that really, we need. You know, that's something that is not really optional.
Yeah.
However, auditor would be subject to, you know, available appropriation, and if, if a legislature appointed an auditor and chose to make it part-time due to whatever reason, or go back to an audit committee--
I'm going to say, and I don't like to give someone some job security, at all, so maybe, and I don't mean to prolong the discussion, so maybe having it be co-terminous is fine, but we used to, forgive me for those words, do it at the organizational meeting, and there were some appointments that the executive, that we just approved. So is, it, it's just an accountability that you, that you do?
Well, it falls into that interesting gap, that if there's a term established, there's a term, but the position still serves at the pleasure of the appointing authority. So--
Okay.
There definitely could be a removal process conducted. However, you know, that term definitely puts a little more weight on the side of having a set term. But it's still a, it's an appointed position, serving at the pleasure of the legislature for both of them, so, you know, I would--
So being co-terminous, would that, adding protection for the person in that position with some comfort, or you could not fund a position, which is commonly done?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, you know, it definitely, it would add some level, level of job security, but, you know, it's an appointed position, and--
There's no guarantee.
There's really no guarantee to, you know, anything when it comes, or any position when it comes to appointed positions.
I could just make a brief comment. Is the, the intention is to make this a position that's always appointed at the organizational meeting?
So I think we're, the clerk of the legislature, if, if it was a co-terminous appointment, would be appointed at the first organizational meeting of, of the legislature, and every three years thereafter. And the auditor, if there was one, that would also take place, I suppose, at the organizational meeting. Right now, they are both, serve until their successor is appointed.
My question comes with, as you're probably anticipating the "may" instead of the "shall", because I think that leaves--
Or auditor.
Yeah, because I think that leaves a gray area, what if there's not, what if there's not an auditor? Then, then do you want language in there saying it reverts back to committee? The reason that this, I think we should be careful how we word this, is because of the existing law that establishes that we have the audit committee, which we would argumentably be superseding by this, by this section, so I think we should make it, we should address the what-ifs to the best that we can. But that's up to you to determine how you want to deal with it.
Well, we have to have one or the other.
So, I mean, do we still all feel that, or is it the feeling of the majority, that these, specifically these two appointments should be co-terminous with the legislature? Or shall they serve at the pleasure of, and serve until their successor is appointed?
Co-terminous.
Co-terminous.
Yes, I agree. I think the legislative board, whoever's coming in, should have that choice.
Okay.
Because my reading of this also is, it's "may" appoint a county auditor, and maybe you come in at your organizational meeting, you say, you know what, this isn't really something we want to do, and then six months down the road, you're like, okay, we actually do want an auditor. Then you would still have the option under this to appoint, but in the interim, you would need a committee to fill that void. And then if you did appoint it six months later, and it would, obviously, the term would expire when we all left office.
Yeah. I think if we just have some sort of what-if clause in there--
Yeah.
Having them co-terminous, because right now, the, the section on the clerk, it says the legislature shall appoint a clerk.
Right.
So at that organizational meeting, and every three years thereafter, the legislature shall appoint, will appoint, and that, that position will be co-terminous with that sitting legislature. And then, of course, every three years, because there will be a vacancy in that office, the vacancy clause for the organizational meeting will take effect in forcing the county clerk to call the meeting to order every three years. But those other, those other years in the interim would be called by the clerk of the legislature.
So I have a real question, is, is the co-terminous an endpoint, or a finality to the appointment?
Yeah.
Basically, if you choose that auditor?
Well, it creates a, it creates an endpoint, but it also, the lack thereof doesn't have an endpoint, but it also doesn't have a, in the negative or the positive. So being co-terminous does assume that that appointment is for the remainder of the sitting legislature's term, where right now, well, under a current charter, if we were to appoint an auditor, it would have to be a part-time only? Is that the way it's written, either part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
Full-time, yeah. So if we were to appoint an auditor right now, it would have to be full-time, and it would serve, it could, that person could serve for a month, and then be, we, the legislature could appoint somebody else. So there's no, there's no length in, in any, in any way. It could go on in perpetuity, it could go, you know, two weeks before being, a successor being appointed. So you've kind of got, you know, if it would be co-terminous, it does assign a endpoint. Without that, it can be, you know, one way or the other.
But if you decided partway through that you were tired of the auditor, I think you would still have the ability, with this language, to get out of it. Is that your intention with it?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of-- Yeah, and that's, that's kind of, you know, if, I'll pose this question to you, if it, if the charter establishes that the legislature may appoint a auditor that shall serve co-terminously, but shall serve at the pleasure of the legislature, those two provisions can act hand in hand.
I think it gives you a lot of flexibility.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay? Okay, very good. Moving on.
You know, I'm not so sure, I think once you give someone a term of office, I don't think it's so easy to just, to, I don't think you can say that it would serve at the pleasure, those are two different things. I think there's, there is a definition with respect to the term of office that would imply.
Well, and I know in, in past discussions, I, at some point, I know the Board of Supervisors was advised that basically, once you establish a term, that position has a term, and a possible removal process, all of a sudden becomes much more cumbersome. And, and had advised the county at that time that you really don't, if, unless the state says you need to have a term, as it does for certain positions, you really don't want to create a term for that case. And I, I definitely agree with you, Legislative DeChesney, that in, in a way, if it's co-terminous and serves at the pleasure of, they're at conflict to a degree, but...
Yeah.
I, it definitely creates a little room for interpretation. You could, obviously, there could be one way or the other, and you could establish a term and say, you appoint at the term, and that's it for that term, which would be the intent of establishing a term, but then serving at the pleasure of, there would be, you know, no term. Having both definitely leaves it open for some interpretation and possible interpretations that you...
I can live, I can live with one or the other, but if you put them together like that, that's gonna make a problem someplace.
Well, that's what I was wondering, what the intent was with it. I, I mean, on the other hand, it does kind of give you an escape route, what if you get an auditor who's horrible, and it's, you guys don't want it anymore, you wanna go back to committee, it gives you an opportunity to...
If that's the fear, then you should not give them a...
Just go and pleasure the board.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, how the charter on the books and this draft charter, other than the few exceptions as per state law, treat, you know, any appointed position that, as of right now, but that they be, that they serve at the pleasure of the appointing authority. So the director of the such-and-such department serves at the pleasure of the executive, and that person can be, either serve until an executive appoints, and that could be, that could span multiple executive terms. Or it could be, that position could be changed whenever, by a new appointment.
But there are two positions that I know of off the top of my head, that according to state law are, have a fixed term.
So those, those you obviously cannot...
At the pleasure of, but the other are excellent.
Yeah. So then we're back to the question of, do we want auditor and clerk to be co-terminous or no?
I think the clerk is one thing, I think the auditor is another. I, I don't have a problem with the clerk being co-terminous. We're all elected, we're here three, they're there three, or whatever, but the auditor, I kind of like at the pleasure of. I, I really think that might be the...
Okay. So basically, we kind of just clean up the language of the charter right now, where it says the clerk shall be appointed at the first organizational meeting and every three years thereafter. And if we just say that, then, you know, it, right now, it, it has that, it, it says something along those lines, as well as the addition of serving at the pleasure of, which is, is conflicted. So if we clean that up so that it be a, a co-terminous appointment, and take out that three point so that it's not, unless we, if we specifically designate the time at which the appointment occurs, it can remain at the three, and the language can remain very similar.
Yeah, well, the clerk, I think last time we were talking about having it so that the term was specific to around January fifteenth, say, so that way we knew we had a clerk for the organizational meeting of that fourth year.
To reappoint.
Right? So I, you know, that's...
But we went back to co-terminous, because what if whispers in the wind say, we're not reappointing that person, we create a bad...
And, and, I mean, that could definitely occur, it's, it's, these are all political elected positions, but, you know, there's a lot of awkward situations in political positions, and, you know, if the sitting clerk decided, they're not going to reappoint me, and I'm not going to show up, the county clerk would have to fill in in their absence.
I thought there was a backup.
There is. So the county clerk fills in in their absence.
Yeah, the situation I saw didn't, didn't arise until the clerk actually read her replacement.
Oh, at the, at the meeting, read the resolution?
Because what's a bit confusing is, like, I say I'm good with a co-terminous, but in this example, or the, the real life example we have now, it sure will be done December thirty-first of that third year.
Twenty sixteen, yeah.